You ready? I'd like to welcome everyone to the December 4th Planning Board meeting. We have a couple on the agenda tonight, one of them is a continued public hearing. I'd like to motion to approve the minutes. I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Three, four, do you agree?
Yes.
Motion passes four to zero. Mr. Thompson is not with us this evening. Chairman's update. Couple months ago, Kevin passed out some literature on a process that we might want to adapt on these closeouts for these projects. Has anyone gone through them or read them or can you agree on them or?
I'll try to give one more meeting so it's convenient.
Todd?
To the chairman, there is also the option of adopting, running it through effectively a beta test, seeing what you think of it and then adjusting it afterwards, or it's a board approval, you guys can change it as need be.
Well, it doesn't really change what we have, it just more, it defines it in a much clearer language than what we have. I thought it was great. Did you happen to bring any, Kevin?
I did, I brought some more copies of it.
Anyone that doesn't have a copy that would like one?
I'd like one. Kevin, ramifications to the zoning by law?
No.
Just procedures.
So, this is a document we borrowed from the state that better establishes what a red line drawing is.
We get blue line drawings, we get black line drawings.
To be fair, we have developers come in and they say they're not sure what we're looking for, so this document might provide guidance on what we're looking for in the red line. So, if someone comes in, we can give them this document and basically say, follow that. And what are the issues with them is if they put the document and say, you need to go to page 12 and make sure you're doing that section or something like that.
So, we gonna kick it off one more meeting?
I, because it's been kicked off, so.
I understand.
That's fine, if you want to vote it, I'll make a motion to approve it as is, and if we need to change it, then we can talk to you.
I'm sure that they.
I'm sure that's fine.
I have a motion before us to approve them. I get a second?
Second.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero, we'll now attach these to every project that go through so that the applicant know exactly what the closing. It's now come time for consulting engineers' report. We have, lucky to have two engineers with us this evening.
So, we did tend to copy in iconically, but I'll read off.
Sure.
Rough extension, rough amount of extension, lot two is ongoing construction. 180 Main Street, the Chase Bank, they're actively progressing, we're keeping an eye on them. 180 Central Street, as far as we know, there's been no update on the wall that was put in. The planning board.
We have, we have the applicant or someone to get up and speak to us about that, so we'll just let that slide for now, thank you.
Okay. And then this, was a COMCOM inspection performed, will we follow up on that, just to let them?
Which property is that now?
180 Central Street.
Okay.
Hamilton Street, do we want to hold off on that?
Please.
Truck space, they're still working on the cut and cap, they're having problems establishing, or they're having problems cutting off all of the water lines.
Oh, okay.
It's an older property, they're actively working in, DPW's working with them. The Continental, that is being pushed off, right?
It's been taken up at tonight's agenda, they weren't ready to come forward.
Yeah. So, I'm gonna leave the Rivercrest, the observed stormwater retention system ports have not been exposed, we did remind the owner to be able to get the street approved, they finished that off.
So, it hasn't totally been accepted, so they've been notified that they have to plow that subdivision?
I will confirm that.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Rinkings, we're gonna be using some of the remaining peer review funds for inspection and landscape this spring. Kaloon.
They were, they were shut down on their own free will today, so.
Crazy game?
Yeah. Maybe we're taking a trip by there tomorrow and see what's up.
I know the Greathapp was serviced two days ago, the board of health was up there, so.
Also, maybe Chafreleg already goes.
Maybe they were doing some interior to, yeah, make an improvement, I don't know.
Okay, the Kaloons, they're being put off for tonight, peer review's working on.
Does everyone have a copy of that peer review report from Steve Bowley?
Yeah, I think it came in yesterday.
Okay.
860 Broadway, okay, there's been some discussion on when they're gonna go for occupancy, and that's part of why we wanted to get the red line stuff in place before that. We have sent out emails, kind of notifying them, trying to get things in place that, we're in such a large project, I do think it's gonna take a while to go through, making sure everything is ready to go, and we're trying to kind of establish that in the beginning. One of the things that we suggested was that they go through, they had made a document showing what was required for the acceptances.
Have you guys got any, any construction reports from them at all in the past year?
We've got a couple slips, been gone by a couple times. There is a representative here, but I don't know if that's appropriate in this meeting, he's got that.
I know, I know we get them from the peer review consultant, but I haven't seen anything from the developer himself, so.
My understanding is most of the, most of the work is right now interior, which I don't go inside the buildings, but we have been reviewing aspots and that sort of stuff. We did kind of come across some issues with the aspots, and we run into the question, and it's really a board's decision of if things are minor or major and how many becomes an issue. There's a, so benches and trash barrels, are they supposed to be installed? Is there a note in there?
It's part of what was presented. I mean, the engineer's here, but it's, I don't want to get into that this evening.
So, we have a list of items on the engineers' report for the board to review, to kind of start trying to decide whether or not you think these are major items, and if you want follow up on that.
Please, I mean, Ginny runs the meeting, I step aside at that, so.
Yep. And this, this isn't a full review, but, so, I think it's gonna take a while to get occupancy set, and I'm trying to start early, so we have proper time to review. So, this is just, as we're coming across things, we're trying to keep the board up to date.
Okay, thank you.
And the last item on our, on our list was the Reliant Grounds, which you guys already took care of, and we appreciate.
So, I have a question on 180.
Okay. Central Street?
Not Central, this is on the Main Street.
Okay.
Talk briefly with your partner today, seems like they've run into a few obstructions in the excavation process?
Large rock, some wood, and some unsuitable material, so they've had to dig deeper in order to find suitable material.
Because that site is a contaminated site, is there an LSU that's overseeing that at this present time, or?
The, well, although their report had some levels of contaminants, as far as the board of health is concerned, as long as the LSP acknowledges the vapor barrier system is built properly, then that's the main concern, in that we get documentation of that.
It also looks like they hit a little ledge up there.
They did.
I think that's to be expected.
Anyone disclose how they're gonna remove that, or?
Hammering.
Hammering?
They have been, yeah.
Yeah, okay. All right. Board members, any questions to the engineers? All right, I'll go on to the next item, I'll ask clerk Nancy, do we have any new submissions or new plans?
No.
Nothing? Nothing from Continental as of yet?
No.
Nothing? Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Sir.
We're still into the chairman's business, right?
Moralist.
Okay. Want to raise the issue regarding the response that we do or do not get from the various departments within the town so August, and my research in like an article two, 12 rather, page 63, the, we should be formally requesting responses from the fire, police, the DPW, everybody, and we have, and we should be getting those within 21 days after the request. We can by our own vote extend that time period up to 35 days, but according to that, according to them, we should not be extending approving a plan unless we get those extensions or we the board agree that those plans or the responses are not necessary. What I'm saying is, we should be sending those requests out for input when we get the plans, and there's 21 days for, say, fire police or whatever to respond, and we can extend that up to 35 days, but we should not be approving plans unless we make a formal decision on it.
I believe that is in the Highway Substantial District?
That's in Article 12.
It's in Article 12 as well?
Article 12, section three, and, yeah.
Mr. Chair, through you.
So, that's, I think I put down pages, starting with page 63, but, the reason I say that because so often we hear that, oh, we talked to the building inspector, we did this, we did that, but they're not coming here, and if we ever want to get things squared away, they have to come back here, as the zoning by law dictates, and stop just taking more than much for granted, and I mean, it's.
I don't think you'll find anyone on this board that disagrees with what you're saying, Mr. Long.
I would say then we should be, for example, in the case of Hamilton Street, well, I'll wait until we get to Hamilton Street before I say anything.
Mr. Chair, can I just interject for one second?
Sure.
So, when you say we should be formally requesting that, what do you mean by formally? Because Nancy does send out an email to them.
I would say that we should, actually, we probably should have had a form a long time ago.
We do have a form.
Oh, then we should be using it and sending it out to the head of the departments, for example, the police chief, fire chief, et cetera, et cetera, they then can assign people that, you know, that, under their supervision, to take a look at those plans, and there's one particular thing, one item we're gonna talk about tonight, that's, to me, has extreme importance as far as that's concerned, and that's Hamilton Street.
So, Nancy, correct me if I'm wrong, but you did that, and we got it back from police and fire, we got something in writing from them saying, that was like two months ago or something, wasn't it?
Plans go to each department before the public hearing for comment.
We should be noting that if we do not get a response, we should be noting in our mess that we do not have the response.
I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, we went over this on Hamilton Street before, and we had gotten the comments back, I don't have the.
He's just not talking about Hamilton Street.
But I'm saying, but you said you're gonna.
I'm not bringing this up about Hamilton, I'm just saying that in our, in the presentations we get on subdivisions, this is how we should be operating.
So, I agree, and she does send the form out, so if you want to start saying that if we don't have that form filled out, letting people know that each department that.
The meeting won't go forward.
But it's, it's hard, because if we, if we have somebody on this end that doesn't do it, it's hard to hold the applicant up or the developer, because then, you know, as we're under a time crunch, it has to happen.
I agree. Without a response on that, if you're going with Article 12, without a response, we do not have to and shall not approve plans. The word is shall not approve. So, when the plans come in, and it comes into, you know, to the chairman's buttling out, he had bank submissions, at that point in time, if there's submissions, we should be requesting that that formal letter be sent out to the various department heads.
It does go to.
I've asked that they send it back signed, that they got it, the date they got it, and no comment at this time.
So, maybe.
It is a response.
Mr. Chair, through you, maybe it might be helpful, Nancy sends it out, and Nancy's very nice about it, maybe the chair should follow up with an email to the department head saying, we need this by this date, this, per, and then.
Very frankly, I put at the end of the request for comment, that we, the planning board, are not obligated to approve any plans, shall not approve any plans unless we have a response on the request that we have sent out.
Maybe they just need like a.
A boost.
A boost from the chair, a reminder.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, what would our request be if they don't comply? Like Ginny said, it's not, it's not the applicant's fault.
I don't know what the ramifications will be, but, what's happened in a lot of cases is we have the engineers going directly to some of these apartments, and they feel that their job is now done, but that doesn't give us any idea, so.
So, so at the town level, all the departments meet once a week, and they, the first thing on their agenda, as the engineers can attest to, is they, you know, the plans, the planning board things come first on the agenda, any projects that are open, any issues that are standing, they go over that every week, the only two departments that aren't there are police and fire, and I agree, fire especially is very important to this, they usually do, they usually do at the last minute, send something to Nancy, they do respond.
When it comes, when it comes down to Hamilton Street, I have another comment, as to why I'm bringing this up tonight.
Okay, well, you remember that.
I'll remember, you know that.
All right.
Okay. So, we're gonna bump one, and we're gonna actually go to Hamilton Street, this is a public hearing, anyone in the audience that wants to speak in favor or against, please come to the podium, state your name, and whatever view we have.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, for the record, attorney Brian McGrail, here on behalf of the applicant on this matter, NBC Properties LLC, with me tonight is Michael Messina from NBC, and Rick Salvo is our site civil engineer on this project from Engineering Alliance. Think you're aware, this has been before your board, going back, I believe, to about August, I think we filed them in July, and we gave a presentation on this to refresh your memory, this is site plan approval.
There's been some changes since then, though.
Yeah, 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 so, site plan approval, it's a, you know, for lack of a better term, residential addiction treatment facility, currently has 30 beds, we were before the zoning board, this matter was before the zoning board back in 2024, and they received approval from the ZBA to add 18.
Now that you're on the subject, why did it go before the zoning board, before the committee, the planning board?
It was deemed to be a legal nonconforming use that needed an alteration, so.
On the existing lot, or on the lot that was bought?
On the whole project.
On the whole project?
Correct, yeah, so the applicant.
What made it nonconforming?
I'm sorry?
And why did it become non?
The building inspector deemed it nonconforming, I didn't handle that hearing.
Okay.
Okay, and it was referred to the zoning board of appeals, obviously, the ZBA determined that they had jurisdiction over it, because they issued a, they issued a decision on it.
So, the existing building sits on a commercial lot?
Residential district.
It is all residential?
Correct.
Okay. That's good to know, that changes a lot of questions.
Okay. So, the ZBA issued a decision on, it's 163 and 167 Hamilton Street, the zoning board issued a decision on that, they approved the alteration extension of the nonconformity, and they allowed an increase from 30 beds up to 60 beds in the facility as it would be modified. As you're aware, the application before your board is for an increase in only 18 beds, so they're not looking for site plan approval to go to 60, they're only gonna go to a total of 48. As you know, you referred it to site plan, the site plan approval application to peer review, we agreed to that, your board retained Tetra Tech to do a thorough peer review, Mr. Salvo's been going back and forth with them since September, October.
I believe that's only on stormwater, if I stand corrected.
It was, it was more matters, I think it was, it was the whole site plan that.
The whole site? We only have back from Tetra Tech, the.
No, there's a section in here.
Oh, there is?
This, yeah, there's 34 items, and we've been going back and forth in the last, from 29 to 34, our site.
So, so Rick has gone back and forth with them, they've issued a letter to your board, it was originally October 6, 2025, updated to November 19, 2025, if you go through it, virtually every comment has been addressed, there are a few matters that Rick would like to address specifically, that he went back and forth with them on, they had a couple little open items that had been resolved, so, with that said, Mr. Chair, if I may, I'd like to hand it over to Rick to kind of have.
Mr. Long, did you have a question for your floor?
Yes, I do. Before you went to the board of appeals, did you acquire that house down front? When you went for your nonconforming use, was that property separate from the property that you were going for nonconforming use on?
At the time, when they went to the ZBA?
Yeah.
No, they were, they were both owned by the same entity.
Did you own the house at the time, that property?
At the time, they went to the zoning board of appeals?
Yes.
Yes, I believe, I believe that's correct, yeah.
So, the nonconforming use then is on the entire piece of property that's being presented here?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, that's the decision of the zoning board of appeals, your zoning board. Your zoning board of appeals has issued a decision on both properties that are included in the project.
No, it's a question, I'm just asking you if it was a part of the plan, that's all.
It was part of the plan, yes, it was part, it was part of the, part of the application. May I to Mr. Salvo?
Please.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, it was the board, for the record, Rick Salvo with Engineering Alliance, as was known, Tetra Tech did a very thorough review on not only the stormwater, but the site plan itself, there were 37 comments in their latest correspondence, that was dated November 19, they noted that the majority of the comments were adequately addressed. There were sort of three outstanding items, one item was they recommended a condition for this wall here that gets close to the property line, it's only about a foot and a half tall, it's not a very high wall in this particular area over here, that this property line be flagged to ensure that all the work remains on our property, we had indicated we were gonna do that anyways, if the board wanted to condition it with the belt suspenders, that's no issue for us. They had also recommended on our subsurface drainage system, that an isolator row, which is a proprietary item to the Keltex system, is sort of a row that's meant to be able to accept silts and fines and that sort of thing, we did not originally provide an isolator row, and our response was we didn't think that one was necessary, reason why we didn't think one was necessary is for the size of this system, this is actually a very small tributary watershed area that heads to it, that stormwater is captured by first deep sump catch basins, then CDS water quality units, the two combined end up with a 95% TSS removal rate, which is an extraordinarily high rate, we didn't think it was necessary, they had recommended, if you read their comments at this item, be discussed with the board to see what your feelings were, rather than, rather than arguing the point, we just decided to modify the design and add the isolator row in, so the isolator row is now shown in the drawings. They had also asked for the proposed tree line to be shown on the drawings, at the time, we didn't want to think it was necessary, because we have an erosion control line, a limited work line, and a limited grading line, nonetheless, we added in the tree line just to make the plans clear and concise. Those were really the three outstanding issues, beyond that, everything is basically saying, you'll notice, look at the plans, from where you said, these plans really shouldn't look any different at all than the original plan that was presented to you, the footprint of the drawing stayed identical to the footprint of the drawing that was, that was presented to you. What's changed were some supplemental backup calculations, I think Tetra Tech, in their review, thought that this was subject to the stormwater bylaw, so a lot of their comments were relative to the stormwater bylaw, we did however, go ahead and provide all those backup calculations that they were looking for, so everything in the stormwater bylaw was, was complied with, you know, rather than us just responding, it's not part of the bylaw, we did submit all the supplemental calculations, and then the biggest thing was they wanted soil testing done in these, in this field to make sure that there was adequate soil there, and that the assumptions in the drainage report were, matched the field conditions, and they matched exactly the field conditions that we had assumed, we don't just assume these out of thin air, we usually take them off of an SCS oil map, which is typically pretty accurate, so, it's generally a pretty good assumption, however, as you know, specific onsite situations can be very different from site to site, which is why they recommended that we do the soil testing, so we didn't argue with that, we went and did that soil testing, and everything matched, didn't require any changes to our drains report, other than, there were a couple of changes that they had requested, we called the woods in poor conditions, they suggested that we call them in fair condition, which creates a little higher rate of runoff, we made all those changes, all the drains designed still checked out, all still worked, which is why they had indicated that there was no further comment required. So, those were the sort of minor changes that were made, like I get, like I said, it was really, a lot of bells, whistles, and details were added, but the overall size, scale, shape, density of the project is exactly as what was presented to you back in August.
Thank you.
So, I had asked early on in the project, I asked you, calculation for the cubic yard amount that's gonna be hauled into the site, are you gonna stockpile that, or are you gonna bring it in for a truckload?
They had, it's gonna, once the site gets demoed, it'll get stockpiled at the area where, once the house gets demoed, stockpile area will be right where the house is, existing. Most of that fill that gets placed behind that wall will get placed as it goes, this isn't like a big export site.
And what is the wall material?
Modular block.
It is modular block?
Yes.
And you have some structural engineering on that?
We do not yet, we'll have to probably pull a separate building permit for these walls, because most of them over four feet, but yeah, but typically, those don't get designed at this point in the, in the process, but they will be submitted to the building department, it will most likely require a separate building permit for them.
So, early on, you had that there was no touching of the water in the storage, I believe you've changed that now?
No, we have not.
You have not changed it?
Yeah, we, we got.
Do we have any idea what size soil line is going in?
We have existing six inch sewer, we have existence fire, six inch fire service, and a one inch domestic service.
So, the fire service is separate from the domestic wall?
Yes.
Okay, what size is the fire service?
It's already sprinkled.
Okay, is it, you're gonna do additional, of course, the fire department will ask you to do that every week.
That's correct, but everything will come from inside the building, nothing's gonna be brought in from the side.
What if the line is? What if the line is not big enough for the service?
I think we had early conversations with the, the mechanicals aren't done yet, obviously, at this point. But I think they, we did already ask that question. I think they had early conversations. So I think we can say with, you know, an 85% confidence level that everything's going to be fine the way that it is. Obviously, once they do their final design, you know, there's a slim chance something could change, at which point we'd have to come back for modification.
The only reason I ask it is the top of the hill. That's all.
Yeah.
Your water pressure is going to drop off, and then you're climbing up even higher than it.
That's right. There's already a system there, so.
How long, how old is that system?
Forty or 50, maybe. I'm honestly not sure. That would be a guess.
So things have changed in the industry, so.
Yeah, I'm not sure when it got sprinkled.
Okay. And what size line did that have?
I believe it's a six-inch.
Six-inch water line coming in for sprinkling?
So is, we have fire service, yes.
Do the engineers have any questions at this point?
So I guess the first thing is where you're stockpiling your soil, isn't it, where you put in the wall?
No, that's where the house is. That'll be the area that'll be filled in.
Isn't the wall kind of going right in front of that?
It's going here and here.
Right, so that'd be the area that you're backfilling, right?
This will be the area that we're backfilling, yeah. That's, like I said, this, I don't foresee them bringing in giant amount of material and then dumping it and then spreading it. It'll be probably brought in and spread.
So that's what we look, that's what I asked you for a trucking plan. That is a residential neighborhood.
Yeah.
It's one of the toughest streets in the town of Saugus, especially in winter conditions.
Well.
And I can't have trucks piled up out in Hamilton Street. That's why I asked for a construction plan as to how this was going to be done.
We'd be happy to provide one. We don't have a contractor on board yet, I think. And, you know, I think that would be an appropriate condition, once we have a contractor for us to submit to you, you know, construction sequencing plan. If we made a construction sequencing plan now and then hired a contractor afterwards, it wouldn't really make a lot of sense to do it that way. But we'd be happy to do that once we get those subs on board. And then their means and methods will be their means and methods.
Yep.
So the board has an assurance at that point. Once we come to a conclusion as to an approval of a construction management plan, then you have an assurance that that is going to be exactly followed because it will come from that contractor.
I think you understand, coming from Saugus, that how the projection of that traffic, first thing in the morning and then again in the afternoon?
I do, I do. I mean, fair point, and it's, and you know, it's a good-sized fill that happens in that area. But also in the grand scheme of things, this isn't a real giant construction effort, but it needs to be managed, and I get it. I hear you.
Mr. Chair, Rick, number 22, can you just touch on that, number 22 for the board again? About that piece of pavement, that small piece of pavement that-
Oh, yeah.
There was some talk about.
It's about, right here, there's about a 20-square-foot piece of existing asphalt pavement that encroaches just into the 200-foot ripper area. They questioned whether or not we should go to the conservation commission and remove that piece of pavement. If that's considered an alteration, it would have to, it would have to go there. Disturbance and alteration are two completely different things. If that becomes a bone of contention, we'll just leave the piece of pavement there. We don't need to take it out.
You can take it out?
Huh?
You just leave it be?
Yeah, I mean, the premise would be to take it out, but if it's going to create a whole nother permitting effort, we'll just leave it in place. We don't need to take it out.
Has that been brought to the conservation commission detention or?
I spoke, I spoke to her, and she said she didn't think that it met the requirements, but he was going to look into it.
I'd be happy to, I'd be happy to talk to the chairman and see what they think.
Just to, it's out of our preview.
That's right. I think, I think our option would be if we decide to touch it, maybe we may, I need to make some kind of filing with them. If we just leave it alone, then we shouldn't need to do anything, so.
Okay.
So would the board like me to continue with the-
Please, sir.
Okay. Having gone through the site, and I gave you a heads up on it. So I just, because I know I saw some decent-sized trees, is any part of the site following the slope protection act? Slope protection bylaw?
In our opinion, no, while there are portions of the site that do, in fact, meet the 25% slope or over a distance of 25 feet or more. That's, those slopes are not natural slopes. The hillside protection bylaw defines, for purposes of this section, the term "natural slope" shall be defined as the elevation of ground surface in its natural state, and natural state shall be defined as including soil and vegetation of every kind before man-made alterations such as grading, excavation, or filling. According to the assessors' records, this facility was built, I want to say in 1910. The house was built in 1940. There's stairs that are built into that slope. That was clearly a disturbed slope. It's not a natural slope. So in our opinion, does not meet the requirement of hillside protection.
So that's your opinion?
Yeah, I mean, it's the building inspector's-
Building inspector?
Oh, well, we'd be happy to talk to him about that, and, you know, if he says we need to go, then we'd have to come back here.
Yeah, hillside protection, because it has to just never have been touched.
Yeah, what's his decision on that?
I'm just making-
Yeah, no, I get you.
Part of that is under the board's purview?
No, thank you. Appreciate it.
The board's some discussion about just making sure that footing for the walls, that everything for the wall, including the footing, was inside the property line?
Yeah.
Especially along the edge with, was it 169 Hamilton?
Yep.
This is odd.
There was a water line in there that I asked you about. Do we know where that's going or what's happening with that?
The exact route that it takes from that point to get into the building, we're not sure of.
Does it connect with the building?
Very, yes. Yeah, that, that, that building has water, sewer.
Is that the water line for that building?
Yes.
Is that the fire line or is that the?
I believe that's a domestic line.
Right, do we know where the fire line is?
We don't know the exact route of the fire line, no.
So I guess that just causes, I'd really like you to not hit your own services. I'm assuming everything comes out the front of the Hamilton Street?
Well, the sewer goes out to-
The side. I saw that on the plan.
Yeah. The sewer, we're able to have scoped and located. We had a locating company trying to locate the wall, and they weren't able to locate it. Beyond that.
Then how'd you get the size done?
Huh?
If they can't locate the whole-
Because you can see it inside the building.
It comes in, into the building as a six-inch?
Yeah.
So you know, so you basically know you have two lines up there, and you know where they come in the building?
Yes.
And, I mean, I'm assuming, because I don't actually know, I'm assuming they come out of the part of the building because that's the closest part where the dishes at, right?
Yeah, I mean, like I said, there was no records on it. We couldn't find any records on it. We couldn't get a location on it. Sewer, we were able to get because we could run a camera through it and have the locator had located the wall we could.
So, do-
That, that must have come off of, the line that Sean, I believe, came up with a plan of records that the surveyor filed.
Okay, so where do the, where's the two water lines come into the building? These, if you want to-
Sorry, Mike was seeing him with NBC Properties. It comes in up here and around, roughly.
Okay, and that's both the water and the-
That's the sewer.
Okay, so you have two water lines coming in, one's a fire line, one's just your regular service. Where do they come in?
The mechanical room is right here. So I think all the utilities, both sewer and the water, they come around the building here and they come in the back. So sewer's right here, and I think the water comes in around here.
Because your plans right now show a water line coming up through, basically, the center where the wall area is, right?
Correct.
And then, then we don't know what happens to it, and it's somewhere else, gets around the back.
Yeah, I mean, where, I mean, all the testing that they need to do on the sprinkler system, you know, I'll get them from the inside.
I'm just worried about, I'd like you to not hit your water service or fire line when you're building your building.
So we, but I, you know, I guess, you know.
You have to go with the dig say, don't you?
Sometimes they're all-
Dig say festing.
So, yeah, I'm not sure, I'm not sure Dig Say's going to be able to locate this water line if we couldn't.
That's us. With the Saugus, it's the-
Yeah. But, look, at the end of the day, if we hit our own water main, hit our own water line, we'll have to fix it. It's not the town, no responsibility of the town on that. It's the private water service.
There was also some discussion, I don't, so if I understand it correctly, the lights for the parking lot, so we have the wall here, the lights are just past there. The light, the light poles were, I think, was it 24 feet or 20 feet?
20.
20. All right, so it's like an eight-to-10 foot wall. So is the light supposed to be 12 feet above the parking lot? Are they supposed to be 20 feet above the parking lot?
I confirm with the, with the lighting contractor after you asked that question, the lighting contractor indicated that he took the height wall into consideration.
So the photometric plan is based off of them being kind of around 12 feet, right?
Those two, yes.
Okay. I just saw that comment in there, and I-
Yeah.
I'm confused enough, assuming you're confused.
I didn't know the answer to it, which prompted me to have a conversation with the lighting contractor, and he confirmed that he took that in.
So you have a lighting contractor, but you don't have a general contractor?
Well, we reached out to a lighting contractor to have the photometric plan.
Okay.
So that's it. And then, then they get engaged again way down the road after the sprinkling and all that stuff.
Unfortunately, as you know, for the board, once it's out, it's out. So that's why we have so many of these questions.
Fair questions.
That was the extent of my, my last comment was that I thought the board might be interested in a trucking plan, which you are.
Yeah, and I think it's a fair request, but I, as you well know, it's better off coming from the guy that's actually going to do the work. And we're happy to submit it to this board for review with engineering or to wherever you decide we should send it.
And as we've spoken, the more that comes to the board upfront, the easier it is to get this thing up and going, so. Mr. Long?
Yeah. I have very much of a personal concern in this particular project. Since I was damn near killed going up the, the side of Hamilton Street going towards Saugus Center on Thanksgiving Day with my mother and father, and a car pulled out. We're talking about traffic plan, and the car pulled out from that particular location and couldn't get back as it passed another car that was making a turn into the driveway, came down the street and hit us head-on, destroyed the car. All three of us on Thanksgiving wound up down the Lynn Hospital at the time. So, just to let you know, a little background information.
Fair point.
So, bottom line is, I think that we should be sending out three reports and getting plans from you to send to the health department, police, and the fire with a request that they respond. In other words, I think that, let me finish. We should, we should have a plan from the fire, from the police department, how they're going to handle the traffic once they know what the traffic is going to be on that. That's a very, that street is not, by the way, the light hanging there over the street that blinks all the time, that's the Bob Long light, just to let you know. Because when Dick Mills was building his development across the street, I requested that. How effective it is, it didn't seem to save me, but it was there. Anyway, I think we should have, before the construction starts, that there should be a plan of what's the entrance and exit onto that property, how it's going to be, how it's going to be handled, with the heavy-duty trucks that you're going to have out there, number one, safety concern. Number two, I think a copy should be going, a copy of your plan should be going to the fire department with a letter from us requesting that we receive their input. As to, what do we know about the, you know, as far as the fire prevention? What do we know about the back part of the building? Is it accessible? Is the roadway sufficient? I'm not an expert, I'm not an expert in this. I'm just saying, as a person concerned about public safety, and after seeing what happened at a place like a downfall river last summer, I'm greatly concerned about having something like any kind of situation develop here in Saugus that passes through this board. So I think we should, fire, police, board of health. They should get copies of this plan and a letter from us requesting that they respond, that they review the plans and respond to us within the 21-day period. We haven't done this in the past, I know, but we should be doing it.
I do know that.
My recollection was from the August meeting that there was a written response from the fire department.
They gave us a response.
Did they have a plan?
But we couldn't, we couldn't match it up against the plan.
We sent 16 copies of the plans to the-
So you made the road wider.
We met with the fire department before we came to this board.
See, that's, that's the problem that we have.
Well, no, no, that's not, we met with them before we came to this board, so we'd understand what they're requesting, which caused us to have to widen this driveway up to 20 feet everywhere. Then when we formally submitted, we submitted 16 copies of the plan, as was required on the application that goes to all the department heads. And then my recollection was there was actually written correspondence from the fire department-
It was.
That they reviewed the plan.
That was back when we first-
Is that the singular sentence that there's no comment?
That was the singular sentence?
You know, don't think of that.
I, listen, I agree with you 100%.
I'm just saying, we're going to be putting people in there.
We just had another one down in Waymont.
And I want them to build something like this. I think it's necessary. I want the safety part of it to be addressed.
No doubt.
I think at that meeting, it was mentioned there was one area that wasn't quite the full 20 feet.
That's correct.
So, if that's 18, if that's 17, but it might be good to call that out. But I guess if-
Mr. Merritt?
Mr. Chair, through you, the fire department is very involved, they're not as involved with us on our level as you'd like them to be, but my understanding, the fire department is very involved with every project that goes on. They, they're on the site, they're going through it, the whole entire construction. In fact, they often ask for more stringent requirements as it goes along.
Here's the problem.
I've never heard them be too lax.
You sit in the town hall. We don't, those of us who are members of this board. Now, wait a minute, we don't hear everything that you hear. We don't see maybe everything that you see. What we do need is official accounting of what we have requested.
Yes, I agree.
Is what I'm saying.
I agree. And you should consider yourself lucky that you don't have to hear all the things I have to hear. However, however.
When I pass the-
I don't hear the fire department things there. They're not in the town hall. They're a separate building. But I do hear that amongst people, and often, they're complaining about how, you know, stringent that the fire department is and all the requirements that they put on them. They put more and more. They are very vague with us, and I agree with you, but they are not vague in what they're doing as far as public safety.
The reason I'm also including the board of health, which I don't believe we've heard anything from, okay, is because you're now talking beds.
Yeah, no.
All right, you're talking increasing the residents. So I would, I don't think this is a big to-do.
I agree with you, and that's why we're going to have the chair crack down on that and have those reports for you. We're going to, Nancy's too nice, but she does send it out, and she does her job, but she can't twist anybody's arms.
A new day is here.
John might be able to.
I will.
Okay.
So having said all that, I have a question. How often do you have emergencies with the clients that you have?
Yeah, that's not a question for me. I'm just the engineer.
Occasionally, there's full-time staff, nurses and doctors here that can handle a lot of crises, but, I mean, there's occasional emergencies, but it's not frequent, it's not regular. Things do arise from time to time.
And I tell you why I ask that. There's a, there's a large strain with all these apartment complexes that we've now built and the ones that are coming forward. It leaves the town, in most cases, with no ambulance, with no police, and no fire. So it's putting a huge strain because of the way that they answer. And this cost that would, if they have to go to another contract to put an extra ambulance on, shouldn't be picked up by the town of Saugus. So it's, that's why I asked, how often, you know? Just so there's an understanding, I have a cousin that has 11 of these facilities, and I've done a little homework with them. And they said it happens, and when it happens, it's serious. Someone that got outside the wall, or someone that comes back, and they may go with the cardiac arrest, they may go. There are issues, and he did lie to me about it. He said, we do have issues, so.
Mr. Chair, I just had a quick question. You have a nursing, you have medical staff on.
We do, yeah.
We do, yeah.
So that'd be different than the apartments.
Right, very true. This is why I'm asking the question.
Eight nurses, give or take, depending on
And that's around the clock, or is it shift-wise, or?
Yeah, it's shift-wise, there is like an overnight, two overnight nurses and one overnight doctor, and then during the day, that's when you have the full staff. There's also two security guards around the clock.
Around the clock? How many shifts?
Uh, I think it'd be three shifts.
Three shifts?
Two or three shifts, yeah.
And you'd always have to
We still, we'll still be working
Because that's a question that we have someone in the audience that may ask you, that's why I'm bringing it forward.
Oh, absolutely, yeah. There's a whole licensing process with the state, and we'll work with the operator through that process, so I don't know exactly if they'll do two 12-hour shifts or three 8-hour shifts, but it is around the clock.
So, what happens if one of your clients decides to leave, walk out the gate, is he allowed back in, or is he?
They're absolutely allowed back in.
Yeah.
But we can, we don't have to stop them from leaving.
You can't stop them?
No, they're not, they're not being detained, this is, this is an ad will.
So they're on their own free will?
Yeah.
To come and go?
Correct.
It's people seeking help, correct, not people that are court-appointed to be there, right? Yeah, so.
It's, that being said, it's a little concerning to a residential neighborhood. This is, you're not the first one that's done this up there.
Yeah.
This is a project that went on 10, 12 years ago. I had a restaurant at the bottom of the hill, and we were constantly having to call the police. They were panhandling, they were picking up cigarette butts that were half-smoked. It was deplorable, and I don't want to bring that back into this neighborhood again. So, that's why I asked you, were they, some of these facilities, they have a rule, you leave, you're done.
Mr. Chair, I do want to mention too, that we did receive something back from Police too, saying that they hadn't had any issues. And the facility, it's the same facility that's been there for, like, what, 25, 30 years?
That's correct, and so
No, no, you are pre-deeped.
Uh, mine personally, no. But our company for the last four, five years.
Okay.
Yeah, the partners at NBC Properties, but it isn't existing.
Mr. Lo.
Yeah, just quickly, speaking of projects, Mr. Selvick, can you guys three sets of plans that can go with those letters up to those three departments, Health, Police, and Fire?
I believe Nancy's already sent them the plans. They have the
Yeah, you know, I think, I mean, just to recap on what you said, and I appreciate the comment for sure, but we did some legwork ahead of time. Don't forget, this was the second public hearing process, so there was a lot of interaction, I believe, with the Police Department that I wasn't a part of. And I took it upon myself to meet two times with the Fire Department. I think had I not met with the Fire Department ahead of time, and I just filed the plan without having any idea, you probably would have gotten a two-page comment letter back from them. The reason why you got no comments from them is because I had at least two meetings and a few phone calls with Catherine Phelan, and we went over what the layout of this was gonna be, just so I could get his input ahead of time.
So, Mr. Selvick, that's what we're looking for? We're looking for all that information?
But, I mean, I mean, that's fine, I mean, I was just trying to
We needed to have
I'm trying to save everybody some work by meeting with them ahead of time.
A verbal conversation with the Fire Department is fine, but we needed to put it on our records.
I think, if I can just address it, what it is, is it's a pre-application meeting. So his plans are fine-tuned in an effort for the Fire Department to not have any issues.
Okay, see, that's the feedback that we're looking
It's similar to what a DPRC is, only they're doing it if it's not a major plan, something like this.
By law, it's backwards. Plans should come in here first, we should be distributing them.
There's no plans, there's discussions with the Fire Department on what
Discussions are meaning
It's more of a concept, it's more of a
But these are before the plans are made. They're before the plans are drawn. Look, there's a 12-foot driveway there now. If I had submitted a plan with a 12-foot driveway, and it went out to comments, and he said, we want 20, we were wasting everybody's time and effort for me to change it to a 20-foot wide roadway. I don't think there's any harm in getting the Fire Department's requirements before we draw a plan, so we draw it the way they like it, yeah.
Our own bylaws state that they have to have, when somebody wants to do a project here, they have to have a pre-app meeting with the Town Manager, and then they have a DPRC meeting, which is with all the departments.
Is that the bylaw that pertains to the mixed use of Route 1?
Yeah.
Or is there an overall, when's the overall bylaw that says that?
Right, so, that's what I was about to say, so the smaller ones, they don't, they're not required to do that, right? Something like this, so they take it upon themselves, it's time, it saves them time and money to meet with those departments on their own. They do that when they meet with the Fire, they also go meet with the Building Inspector to try to get ideas.
To the best of my knowledge, Town Meeting never voted to have three meetings on projects coming here, except on what occurs up on Route 1, on the mixed housing up there.
Sustainable Highway District.
Yeah, Highway District.
Right, but what I'm saying, it's the same concept of that, though, so that has to happen with the big projects.
But here we have confusion.
I don't think we do at all.
He's, they're trying to save every, they're trying to save time and money.
Because I think it's, according to the bylaw, that information be coming here, we send it out for comment, comments come back to us.
Okay.
That's the process.
But wouldn't you rather it come to us with less work to be done?
If they iron out those Hours in the dock, in the block, it makes no sense.
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
It's easier to have the comments put on paper, and if they'd like to deliver them with the plans to us, at least we have something. All we got was a one-line item
Correct.
saying, it's okay to go forward.
Yeah.
But you just said that you had extensive things that you talked about.
Before the plans are drawn.
That's okay. We're looking for that to put in our file.
Why do we need that, though, if that's not on the plan?
I just think the way things are, that we do.
Those are like, they're like ideas that get ironed out, and then we're getting out, we're getting the ironed-out plan.
The access to that site today is not very good. And anytime I work in a site that the access isn't very good, and I work in a lot of municipalities around here, the very first thing I do is go meet with the Fire Prevention Officer and find out what they want to have for access, because they're the most important people in my view to have access. So to get an opinion from a Fire Prevention Officer before you set off and draw a plan, and draw a plan wrong, doesn't make any sense.
We can't stop you from doing that.
We're not saying you can't do that.
I thought you just did.
No, you can go and talk to anybody in the Town Hall that you want to, you can talk to anybody over in Public Safety if you can want to, you can go up to the TPW and talk to them. Find out what their concerns are, then you devise, you know, you develop your plan, take it into consideration.
That's exactly what we did, that's exactly
Wait a minute.
Oh, we didn't talk to them after we filed. If you think we talked to them after we filed, we did not.
I didn't say that. I didn't say that at all. What I did say to you is, if you really want, and you probably should, since that's your business, to develop those plans the way you think that it's gonna be acceptable to boards like this, that's fine.
Yeah, that's what we did.
No, wait a minute. What I'm saying is, do that if you want to, put it on your plan that comes before us, okay? And these questions, some wouldn't even be necessary. And, and, we would still send that plan out to those department heads that we think should be responding, and ask them directly to return to us what their written comments are, and not go to the Building Inspector, like they are.
With all due respect, that's exactly what we did, exactly what
Where are the comments? I don't see them.
There was a one-line, it says, we have no comments, because I had his input ahead of time. Yeah, no comments, there's a comment. They acknowledge it.
They have it, they're satisfied, there's no issues.
But, yeah, without, we didn't do something after the fact, and talk to them after the fact, and stop the board. We got input from them ahead of time, we drew our plan, we submitted to the board, the board forwarded to the Fire Department, the Fire Department responded, we have no comments. Why did they respond in such a simple manner? Because we had done a little legwork ahead of time to make sure that we were gonna give them what they wanted to say.
I'm still
We're still talking different languages?
Alright, anyway.
So.
Does anybody in the public have anything to say?
Yeah, let me just finish.
Okay.
I have a couple of questions on the test borings that you submitted in the latest sample.
Yep.
They seem to got down to about 5'9" and hit obstructions? Boulders?
Yeah, we had some real big boulders. I don't remember what's the exact
How do we know they're boulders? Because every single one of the test sites says boulder, boulder, boulder.
It doesn't matter if it's boulder or ledge, we still have the adequate separation. We need to have two feet of separation to ledge or boulders. We had like 3.8.
So, some of the material that's above the boulders was unsuitable to build upon?
No, these test pits weren't done for soil bearing capacity, these test pits were done for drainage purposes only.
Have we done any tests to find out if we have suitable material there?
I believe you did, had a geotechnical engineer to do horns.
We did.
Yes.
Do we have those results?
Did we include them in the application?
Um, I thought we included them. Included them in the original application, let me see.
I noticed some in the latest one.
Well, certainly after No, the test pits were in the latest one.
You go for building permit, like that'll be part of the whole package.
This has come up in this town just about every project.
Yeah.
And because of what we sit on.
Yep.
So.
We're happy to provide that information, especially since we got farther along in design.
Like I said in the beginning, if we have that, this just stops some of the process.
And we submitted in the original drainage report, and the updated drainage report, yeah.
So is the back of it?
Yep, it's right in here, right here. Ad Rock, Ad Rock Geotechnical Engineering and Testing.
So we have one that come in on July 31st, and we have one that has come in on November 16th.
They're in both.
Okay, I just looked at the last one.
I'll read you the conclusions. In summary, the observed native soils appear to be medium-dense gravelly sand, provided the contractor adheres to geotechnical engineering recommendations contained in this report. These soils can be prepared properly for structural support.
They can be prepared properly, structural support. So what do we have to do to prepare it for structural support?
We'll have to
I mean, I don't think the whole structure, all the structural engineering and foundation systems and all that haven't even been designed yet. I'm not even sure that they know what the reactions are. That's a building permit issued typically.
Well, no, it's a site work permit for us. Once you start digging, we're committed. So, but yes, the Building Department, the Fire Department, what happens with it, that's up to them.
Yeah.
We just want to know where you're going with it, should it be. I'm just looking, as I said in the beginning, the site itself is tight. You're gonna start bio-material, and then start excavation. So if this material turns out that it's no good, now what are we doing? We have active traffic.
Oh, this is a slot, this is, we're on, are we on face man, I forget, I mean, there's not
Uh, it's not, it'll be more of a crawl space.
Yeah, there's not really an excavation, there's not a lot of excavation. This is all import, there's no, yeah, there's no major excavation that's happening here, this is all imported material.
And how much of that is coming up on that end of the project?
Let's see, 62. At its highest point? Six feet.
Six feet?
At its highest point, all the way at the front here. Yeah, and it goes to zero as you get up to closer to the building. Because it drops off.
Right. Okay. Another question. 48 beds, what are we running for a kitchen?
A full-service commercial kitchen.
Excuse me?
A full-service commercial kitchen.
You will have a full-service commercial kitchen.
Currently, there's nothing there.
But you will have a full-service kitchen?
We will.
So with a full-service kitchen, gentlemen, do we require a grease trap?
Be a Board of Health question.
Well, it will, but I'm just, again, under our preview, we need to know where we're going, how it's gonna fit.
Talk to the Board of Health, and yes, if it was a, what he had said, if it was a regular kitchen and they were bringing their own food in, it's one thing, but if they're preparing meals, then there would be a grease trap.
But they're prepared, they're cooking meals, they're bringing them, heating.
I still think we're working through that. The idea is that we may have a commercial kitchen. We may cater, that ultimately depends on the end-user of the facility.
Okay, so it's something that
It's a possibility.
So we have no architecturals, we don't know what's going on? Normally, we have at this point, we do see an architectural
We submit an architectural grant, this schematic level.
Do we have this set of plans?
Yes, in the original set of plans we submitted. We didn't resubmit the architectural, so they had changed.
Oh, you didn't resubmit?
They were architectural grants, absolutely.
Okay, I thought maybe there was a change in the plans, no? Okay, so it's something to think about. The board have any other questions?
I had one thing, Mr. Chair, the engineer. You know, I just, and having to wait for the contractor to determine the actual wall and the means and methods, I guess makes it a little more difficult to analyze, but 169, so showing a 13-foot wall in a block, and I don't know if the blocks represent the top or bottom of wall, but I see it logistically being difficult to not spill over onto that property. And I just don't know if that's been considered.
Yeah, I mean, I think that comment was raised, we discussed that with Tetra Tech, given the fact that it's a fill situation. They agreed with us in our comments that it's very simple, if it was a cut wall, it would be a whole nother story. Or it's a fill wall with these modular block systems, there's a trench cut, there's a very small excavation, there's a bedding layer compacted, the walls get placed, and it gets built almost like Legos. They've layered, they put a layer of wall down, they backfill behind it, they put another layer of wall down, they backfill behind it, it gets built as it goes.
That's why I asked if there was any structures on the wall yet.
Not yet, no.
Okay.
Typically, at this level, that expense isn't made yet.
The correspondence, the last one was from Tetra Tech to Engineering Alliance, or you've responded?
No, it was to the planning board, there was no correspondence directly back
They mentioned maybe putting a condition.
We didn't have a Tetra Tech to pound it.
You're right, but have you responded to their most recent letter?
I did.
Yeah, yeah, we have commented, you want to see them?
Because I know we got a resubmital last week, but I don't
Yeah, so there were basically three things in there, which is, it was discuss with the board whether or not you need to show a proposed tree line on the plan, we added the proposed tree line. Discuss with the board whether you need an isolator row in the field, because we felt we didn't need one. Rather than, I'm gonna point, we put the isolator row in. And then, there was the suggestion that a condition be added that the property line, where the wall is in close proximity to the property line, be flagged in the field so everyone could see where the property line was, to ensure that there was no
And that was from Tetra Tech on the 19th, November 19th.
So the site is flagged, Mr. Selvick?
I'm sorry?
The site is flagged right now?
No, we make that a commission, a condition.
I'd like to see it flagged.
They wanted a condition that those property lines be staked before that construction happened, to ensure that the property
Yeah, to have it surveyed. When's the last time that property was surveyed?
Uh, we had the Senate, we got comments that we got in October, so it would have been in October.
Okay.
One of the comments, a couple of comments required some additional survey.
So is there not a response, formal response to that letter forthcoming?
There is, it was submitted last Wednesday.
On the 19th, it was, their final comment to the wall comment, which is number 31, it came in on Tetra Tech on the 19th, it said, "We recommend a condition requiring the applicant clearly mark the property line in the field during construction of the wall to ensure all work remains on the subject property."
And then
And we're fine with that condition.
But, I guess what I'm getting at is, did it get responded to say, yes, we will? Because I get, we received new plans last week.
He recommended that the board make that a condition.
And my plan is to make that a condition in my motion.
Okay, so, the, so I guess the 20-some-odd other items have been, so we're not waiting for Tetra Tech to look at these new?
No, they've all been resolved.
They all say, in our opinion, this comment is resolved.
Mr. Jim? This wall, Mr. Jim, it's designed by who?
There's no design on the walls of yet.
They'll be designed, typically they're designed by the wall manufacturer, because the wall blocks typically have proprietary
Again, lifetime experience here in Saugus. We've had walls go up, go down, you know that.
I do.
One down, a water retention across from Kane Stone, that's on Saturday morning.
That was before my time.
I know, but it wasn't before.
You were resident then.
I jumped on my horse, I was down there in the mist. But the other one was, of course, the housing, the houses that were up above Hamilton Street.
Yep.
You remember how that wall went down, and it came down to the neighbor's yard and everything, and the big to-do over there? This wall design should be signed by a certified engineer, I believe.
It has to be. The State Building Code requires that.
Yep.
And I think, I'm sure the Building Commissioner sensed that wall, the wall, I know walls have been a lot more strictly looked at in this town since that incident, but yes, it will be required to it will be required to have its own building permit, it will require to have a design, and it will be required to have a certification at the end that it was built in compliance.
Since that's going to be part of our approval, I think that we should be getting a copy of the design certified by an appropriate engineer.
I think that's a reasonable condition. We have to prepare for the building permit anyway, so there's no reason why we shouldn't have this, send it to the board as well.
Thank you. Continue.
Any other questions? This is a public hearing. Is anyone in the audience who would like to speak in favor, or anyone that would like to speak against the project? Please come to the podium, state your name and your address. Hearing none? What's the wish of the board?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
At this time, we have a motion before us to close the public hearing.
Close?
Does it have a second?
No.
Why? First of all, you can't tell me what motion, if you don't like my motion, you vote no. You cannot, we've had this discussion multiple times, you do not tell me what my motion is.
It's a continuing public hearing, because you're waiting for information to go.
What information are we waiting for?
How about the wall certification?
We're going to make that a condition, I'm going to make that a condition part of my motion. Let me make my motion, and if you don't like it, you can make an amended motion, or you can vote no.
When are you going to see the certification then?
When it's built.
When it's built, when they do it, when they get it.
When are we going to get the response from the board of health as to the facility itself? When are we going to get the condition, anything the fire department or the police department?
Why don't you tell me all the conditions you want, before I make my motion, so I can add your conditions?
You want to close the hearing, I want the hearing to be open.
No, you don't keep the hearing open, you close the public hearing, you motion to approve it, and then you list the conditions, and then they have to adhere to the conditions that we put in place.
I think it's.
You can't continue this forever.
I think it's back into, do as you want.
Bob, if you want me to get amended.
So, actually, I'm going to stand up, can I stand up?
Please.
Michelle Muir, and I'm on 136 Hamilton Street. I know nothing that's going on. Like, I just heard about this extent they want to build, you guys want to build. I know nothing, like, I didn't get any letter, nothing. So I don't even, I'm just now, I'm sitting here going, okay, okay, what's going on with that White House? Are you knocking it down? You're knocking it down, is that parking, or is that to extend it? Are you coming in with just eighteen extra beds, but because of that property, you're going to be able to extend it later?
No, no.
So like, what's happening? I know nothing.
Yeah.
I mean, how come we as neighbors didn't receive anything about this?
Nancy, she outside of the three hundred feet perhaps? Yeah, the town sends you a, the bylaw notification.
Okay.
By our town bylaws, it's supposed to be the applicant that says this. We've been through this before.
Well, whatever, I'm just saying, I know nothing about it, so now, I thought it was, I just heard in the street, I'm like, what? Well, let me get down to that meeting, so just.
Did you get any of the board appeals meetings?
No, I knew nothing, I literally heard about it last week.
Hi, interesting, thank you for coming tonight. I can answer part of that.
Would you please stand up and come to the podium?
Yeah, absolutely, sorry.
No, no, I'm sorry, I mean, I can't see this, I don't know, like, where are you putting the addition? Where's it going on that building?
Yeah, the addition's going towards Hamilton, I mean.
Why don't you just figure it out?
Oh.
Go back on plan, it's probably easier to see.
Absolutely.
Yeah. There you go, that shows all the existing houses right here.
The White House.
Yeah. The gray is the addition.
This is gray. If you're a neighbor, I'm happy to give you my contact information. We can be in touch if you have any questions now.
So, Hamilton Street, this is the house, this is the driveway to come in, this is the building, so you're going to put it in the front, and there's people's houses right here.
Across the terminal. And so there was a.
So are you basing this?
Yes. There was a zoning board here last year.
It's hard. I'm going to give you one too.
This is really dimensional site management, structural management, etc., et cetera.
Yeah, I mean, I just, I didn't know anything about this.
Yeah, and I'm happy to share these plans with you, and I can give you my contact.
And he's right about the traffic, it's a freak show in the winter on Hamilton Street going on. Slip and slide, slip and slide, and then the trucks think that they can go fast, I mean, it's a freak show.
Sure.
And I've had someone, like, a heart attack, hit their car, hit another guy, came flying to my house, which is fine, because I have cement, I mean, you know, brick, so it didn't do anything to the house, but it's a freak show, so when you do, if you go ahead with that, be very careful on that hill, it's literally, and then people just try to go around, but I didn't know, at least I know now what's going on.
Bob, when you had your accident, was that when the nursing home was there?
No, I think he just said it was just during Thanksgiving, right? You had your accident.
This is years ago.
Yeah, Bob, when you had your accident, was the nursing home there?
Yeah, they set back off the hill, that's why there was a car pulling in there, and another car, a Ford LTD, pulled around it, couldn't get back, there was a pitch on some pavement.
So the good news about this one is, you know, the nursing home attracted visitors, stuff like that. So many people that come around here are the staff, really, no visitors.
Who's there now? Like, what's?
Current, so, beginning of the year, it's been vacant, so no one is operating there now. But this is.
Excuse me, sir, just can you come here, just so the people at home can hear?
Yeah, absolutely.
Because the microphone won't pick it up.
Yeah. So currently, the building is vacant.
Okay.
But it was a thirty-bed addiction treatment facility.
Okay.
And that was operating for, under NBC properties for about five years prior to that.
And so now it's still going to be a facility like that?
It will, yeah.
Is it going to be coed, because I think it was coed before?
Correct. Yes, eighteen more beds, just eighteen, yeah, exactly.
Okay. And I guess that's.
Thank you for coming, thank you for the time.
Thank you. So we want to close the meeting?
I want to, Mr. Jim, before we go any further, such agencies have to, we're talking about Board of Health, Police, Spotify, et cetera, et cetera. Such agencies will have twenty-one days of receiving said copies, reporting writing to the planning board to the adequacy of the data and the methodology used by the applicant to determine the impact of the proposed development, and to the effects of the projected impacts of the proposed development. Said agencies may recommend conditions or remedial measures to accommodate or mitigate expected impacts of the proposed development. Failed by any agency to report within the allotted time, which is twenty-one days, shall constitute approval of that agency, by that agency, of the adequacy of the submittals, and also that in the opinion of the agency, the proposed project will cause no adverse impact. The planning board shall not, shall not render a decision on said application until it is received and consider all reports requested by the town departments and boards, or until the twenty-one day period has expired, which is even earlier. Such circumstances are such that the twenty-one day period is insufficient to conduct an adequate review, the planning board may, at the written request of the applicant, extend such periods to thirty-five days. It says we shall not approve, and.
It's just point of order, that's it, but if the twenty-one days expire.
Play my wall, who's telling you why you thought they am?
Could you please come to the podium?
Thank you. What I was going to say is, what was read is, if the twenty-one days expire, it says it shall be deemed that they don't have any issue. So they have twenty-one days to respond. If they don't, they're fine, it's implied that they're fine with the project. You can't vote until the twenty-one days expire, you have to give them that time to do it. So that's the way the bylaws.
Once we send out the request that they respond.
Yes, sir.
To the best of my knowledge, we haven't sent out any requests.
We do.
Nope, they've been sent out verbally.
She sends it out, she sends, we have a form and she sends.
A form, I'm just not sure, we get them back from the departments?
Did you send out Board of Health?
Yes, it goes to all the departments.
Did you get one back?
They don't, they don't send them back.
Yes, no comment.
Yeah, that's what I asked you, they need to sign it and say no comment, so that we know that they received it. That's a internal problem.
Under your bylaw, twenty-one days go by, twenty-one days go by.
I was just disturbed that we have neighbors that's out there that still don't know, I've received a few phone calls personally, as to what's going on.
Just to correct the point you made earlier, it is not the applicant's responsibility, it's the town's responsibility. The only bylaw that requires the applicant to notify the abutters is the Wetlands Protection Act. Zoning board, planning board, Board of Selectmen, licensing board, it's the town's responsibility to notify.
And the requirement is what, three hundred feet?
And that's why we pay a three hundred and fifty-dollar advertising and notification fee.
Yeah, and it is, all the public hearings are in the paper, and then they continue, so. So I'm not sure how you didn't get notified, and I may apologize for that.
Then you wouldn't have been notified. Do you think you were only three hundred feet away?
Oh, definitely. But I'm like, maybe four houses away.
Abutters, two abutters within three hundred feet of the property.
Yeah, so you're probably four hundred feet away, you're probably just outside of the notification. You might not be in a abutment with an abutment, so.
But again, I just want to reiterate too, this is not like it's, we're bringing in a new establishment here, a new business. This business has been there forever, all they're doing is just adding eighteen more beds, which eighteen more beds isn't even enough, because this is such an epidemic, that we don't have enough of this in our town. So they're just adding to it, they're not creating a whole new, you know, use for it. So, now, if everybody's done, is it?
We have a motion before us?
I'm going to make a motion to close the public hearing.
You got a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. No, okay. Motion passes three to one?
Mr. Chair, at this time, I will make a motion to approve the site plan review for 163 to 167 Hamilton Street as presented with said conditions. One, flag the land during construction of the wall to ensure the work remains within the property. Do not remove the asphalt as discussed without touching base with conservation. Provide the board a construction management plan, including the trucking schedule when that gets underway, and copy of a certified plan for the wall to the board.
Well, there'll be others to have to go to that.
There's one more thing I'd like to ask.
And?
I think the board was also concerned about whether or not it needed a grease trap. So if you're going to require them to submit the wall design also to the board, you might want to also have them supply the board with information whether or not they need a grease trap and to follow up whatever from the Board of Health concerning that.
Okay, and it's Mr. Baldwin added about the grease trap, which I think, well, you'll have to do anyway, because you'll have to touch. Building Commission.
If we do a kitchen, we'll have to do a grease trap, so that's understood.
Okay.
Did you include the tree line?
The tree line?
Yeah.
The tree line's on the plan.
Tree line, he added that on there. Any other conditions you want added, Mr. Long? Speak now.
I'm just, no, I, you put a condition there, you're approving a plan, but you don't know about the wall.
We have, we, they.
No, you make that a condition.
The wall falls under, they're just going to show us the certified plan, they're going to, they're going to give us the courtesy to show us the certified plan, so we feel better. But that will fall under the building commissioner, who is a stickler on the walls and certified engineer plans. So he's, but they agreed that they'll share us that document, even though technically they don't have to go to.
I think things should come here first, before they go to the building inspector. This is our job.
So I'm in the middle of a motion, do you want to add any more conditions?
No, I know, I'm voting, so go ahead and do what you're going to do.
What?
Go coffee and vote.
I'm in the middle, I'm giving you the courtesy to add a condition, if you'd like to add any other conditions.
I think all the information should come here first.
Okay, that can't be a condition. Mr. Chair, do you have any other conditions you want added?
I do, I'd really like them to find the water lines, know what we're dealing with.
That's no problem, if we can, we can make some test bits if we can't, if we can't get any satisfaction. That's no problem.
So you probably want to put a time, so if they're checking where the, so if you're approving a plan tonight, and I'm.
Approving what's been submitted tonight.
Right, so they would be reporting, you'd probably want to put something in there. The condition would be that they find the water lines and report it back to the board before they start.
I'm not really sure what the relevance or the importance of the water line is. Like you said, if they burst their own water line, they're responsible for that. What bearing does that have on us?
Well, if it comes in on the main street, or if it comes in on, what's the, Side Street, Ali, then they would have to go, and they won't be able to open up until spring, if this project started tomorrow, I mean, they can't open up the road. October 50th, what's the close date?
Uh, November.
November 15th, April 15th, we're not, this is, this project wouldn't.
I thought you were starting this until the spring anyway.
We're starting to create construction drawings, handle drawings, we've got some time ahead of us, before we reply for building permit. But we can submit it as part of the building permit application and copy the board on that, if you want to make sure of that.
So.
Condition on hours of operation?
As part of the.
The time, time, it's not, because it is a residential neighborhood?
Okay. Okay.
Conditions that the, the board be notified on, or I think you have that under the construction plan?
Construction plan, yeah, construction management plan.
So would the hours be restricted? And if so, when would they be restricted to? Do you have any, you're talking construction, yeah, construction hours.
Well, right now, I believe that it's eight o'clock in the residential area, eight to five.
Is it eight to five?
If, well, it's.
About Saturdays.
And that is an issue, it can be by the town bylaws, Saturdays in there. Definitely no work on holidays, definitely no work on Sundays.
So eight to five, Monday through Friday, what would the hours be on Saturday?
Saturday, it's the same time.
Eight to five?
It's six days, yeah.
Okay. But no Sundays, no holidays, which is, that follows the state building codes.
You have a project that didn't believe in that. I don't think so, but that would have to be.
The state building code does say seven, I think it says seven to seven.
What is it at eight sixty?
Some towns, every town's different.
I'm saying the state building code.
State building code.
I believe it says seven to seven.
Yeah, but every town is different though.
Right.
So maybe we just add, we put in there that you checked.
Well, Michael, Michael will, our building commissioner will go through that anyway. But I just want to make sure it's mentioned.
Okay.
And there's some thought that maybe you can come up and help the town out with responding to major, major conditions that happen within the facility. It's just if it's going to be a constant, then it may have to be a fee that's applied, and it's just something of that nature.
So I have my motion with the conditions, do I have a second?
Engineers would like to add to the conditions? It's all granite curb?
No.
It's not all granite curb?
Concrete, granite in the right way.
Driveway coming in is granite though.
Granite in the right way coming, yeah, and then transition to the concrete on the side.
You have a landscape plan?
We have a landscape plan, registered actually.
Anything else? I think that's, that's it, or someone else has something? Sidewalks will have to meet handicap requirements.
Very little sidewalk in this.
There's no sidewalk?
Very little sidewalk in this, just along the.
Well, from the parking to the front door, I'm sure you're going to strike that.
Isn't this all the way up?
About it?
It's all the way up, people are going to be traveling on foot, the patients can leave.
I think most of the parking for the facility is.
Guys, I'm in this, but making a motion, this is supposed to be over. So you seconded my motion?
I'll second.
All in favor?
I took the vote.
We already took the vote?
We did.
For the motion?
Yeah.
You did, want to close?
No, you didn't, yeah.
We did.
We closed.
Bob's the only one that didn't.
That was the public hearing, not me making my motion.
I take that back, go ahead. We have a motion before us, go ahead.
I second it.
We have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
No.
Three to one, motion passes.
Okay.
Chair, I can ask, what's the protocol for a decision? Do you expect council to draft a decision?
It's going to, the conditions will be drafted, be reviewed by the board's attorney, and we'll get a copy back to Mr. Salvo.
Timing on that is usually just a sandbox, just because we have a financing deadline.
What's your financing deadline?
Let's see, we'll need the appeal period until, we've got it in January.
When is it?
Well, he needs it to, the appeal period to end in January, so what does that mean, you need this?
It's got to be clocked in by just after, within about a month, it'll be clocked in over time.
We'll get it to you before then.
Great, very much, thank you very much. Did you want me to send those three copies to Nancy, or?
No, she already has them.
Okay.
She already has them, and they've already been sent, so, thank you.
Thank you, good times.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Happy holidays.
Thank you.
What do you have next? That's it?
Next on the agenda, it's an informal discussion, 180 Central Street.
Okay, now. Nancy, they were notified, 180?
Yeah.
What? Oh, 180, yeah.
You speak the name?
Patrick Scully, for Sleeping Dog Properties. We've taken over the project for Mr. Pacelli of Central Developments. He's become ill, and now residing in New Hampshire for the time being, and we've taken over the project. I'm here basically to work to get the answers to the building inspector for the transformer and some of the pervious pavement issues that we've had on, on site.
Kevin, were you notified at the change of hands? We just talked to him. Someone said to you they weren't doing-
Oh, no, he still, he still owns the property and everything else, he's retained us to finish his project. As far as managing, as far as managing, yes.
Oh, just the project manager?
I'm the project manager for, for the company that he hired.
Because they were doing their own building then?
Yes.
So are they still involved in that, or?
Oh, he's, he is still involved, to a point, but again, he's become ill, and he's pretty much-
His son was running the project.
His son, right, his son works for this company. So he, they're all, we're taking it over from the, from the father, to finish the project. I think, I think even the permits and everything were pulled under, under the son's name.
Are you aware what was requested a couple of months ago?
So bear with me, because we just took it over three weeks ago. I've been doing, I've been jumping into this for the last two weeks. Again, trying to get it further along from where it was, it's been delayed for quite some time. And some, I just found out about this meeting this morning, so I do have some of the questions that are, are, to be answered, but again, bear with me and let me know if there's something I'm missing here.
We required a red line drawing by the engineer and the changes that have taken place upon the property.
As, as, as far as?
As far as everything he's done without permits.
Okay.
We'd like to have a copy of the deadline document.
We definitely see it.
No, no, our document, we expect-
Oh, the guidelines?
Yeah, we have them, a copy here, and-
We can give them a copy.
Yeah.
Take that.
You have for an engineer?
I'm sorry? Same engineers, everybody else is the same, we're just managing those people to finish out the project. So same subcontractors, same electricians, same plumber, and so forth. Again, we've just taken over the project so that it can, it can be finished. So I guess he was running this himself, Mr. Pacelli, and again, apparently there's a few things that are, are missing here. And again, he, he became ill to a, to a-
Sorry to hear that.
Bad point, and he's come to the conclusion that he's not going to be able to finish this himself. So, again, we've just taken this over three weeks ago, and really just digging into it now.
So you have the same design team, same engineers, all of them?
Yes, same LSP, same, yes.
Have you gone into the town to see the building commissioner?
Not yet, no, haven't gotten that far yet.
So whose license is on the job now?
It's still, still Joe Pacelli's, which is his son, has the license on the property. For the building permit.
Is he actively on the job when the work is being done?
Yes, yep.
I don't know why he didn't come tonight.
Again, the father called, sent this to me, Mr. Pacelli Senior, and I guess this, this was something that he had-
Because he was here with his father, and he knows all the, all the things that we were looking for.
Okay.
And he's now provided them.
All right, so, so what, so again, I have a few items here that I, I'm assuming that's what you're looking for, but as far as a full red lined set of plans, I-
Which was supposed to have been done by his engineer, which was, was not done. You had mentioned a couple, the transformer pad, the location.
So, um-
Change of parking, the side deck.
The side deck with the wall to the, to the transformer.
Oh, but they call it a blast wall, because it's, it stops the transformer should it explode.
Right, so-
So he was told to stop working on all that till we get it. And I've been by the site many a times, and that work is continued.
He did, he did build a wall there, but-
The walls in the basin of the river as well.
Right, what I was told is that it's in the right spot, but it was required to be eight inches thick and so high, and he built it a foot thick, and higher than what was required, so. But yeah, they've taken out the blast wall phrase, I guess, from that, but it is a-
Okay, so what about the wall that's in the sagas river? Before the deck, there's a concrete wall there?
Yeah.
That's not a blast wall.
It's, uh-
Blast wall is the one that's in front of the building, behind the transformer.
Behind the transformer, right.
So there's two walls that we're talking about.
Yep, two walls, right, right, so one's like a landscape wall that's at the front of the sagas. Okay.
Transformer's not on the print. Location's not on the print.
So, if I can- I have, I mean, I have a full plan too, but, and again, I don't know how old this is, but it does show the transformer and so forth at the end of the property.
You got a revision date on that? That's the, that's exactly why we don't take eleven by seventeen copies.
Transformer's at eleven, eleven fourteen.
I'll wood you. It's been ongoing.
Okay, yes, I see the stuff twenty-three before that, so yes, this is a newer plan. And I do have a full set of this there, so, I mean, I can, I probably shouldn't meet the building inspector, go through this, we submit-
I would go down and introduce myself.
Yep.
You have a lot of outstanding conservation issues too, that'll have to be addressed.
Have you got, have you got a copy of the order conditions for the site?
I do have a copy of the order conditions, yep.
Have you reviewed it?
Haven't got, haven't gone through the whole thing yet. Again, um, so many issues-
Huh?
I believe, because I, I met you, it was like, two weeks ago.
Yeah, but I think the first day I started, so, right.
So when you do get to, when you get, start getting through the order conditions and start getting the site, when you start coming into compliance-
Right.
You would need to notify, reach out so we know to come and do another inspection.
Right, okay. Right, understood, I haven't, haven't, again, haven't gotten that-
We haven't had a formal response for the inspection yet, but that, that'll be forthcoming too.
Right.
So should that be going to you?
That should be, but you can still send it to him, but I don't know if he's, I'd rather, I'd give you the information to send it to me.
Do you have a business card?
I don't, I'm not, yeah, just that new into the process.
So tomorrow, send me an email with your contact information.
Okay.
Because I know you have my business card.
Yes, yep.
And I'll forward it to, to-
So you'll be running the job then?
Yes.
Okay, but you're not licensed?
I'm licensed, yep.
Okay.
Yep, I am licensed.
What was his name, sir?
Pat, Patrick Scully.
Thank you.
So, again, so that's, I can get you the information, specs on the blast wall, red line set of plans, from what-
How about a timeline, or what's to be completed, when and how?
In process, so I guess it's been-
I'm saying the board would probably be, that's information the board would probably like.
Right.
So I, I'm under the impression that someone has asked for an occupancy permit for some of the building. That's not going to happen.
That's, okay, so I do have that as a question at the end, because of, of the delays that we've had, that he has had for this process. Sorry?
Not a delay on the town sagas spot?
No, 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 delay on, just general, in, in, just in general delays that he's had.
Which, which becomes his problem, not ours.
One has become, and again, I guess the, the pervious payment issue came up, which the LSP had a, it's been so long, he had an issue with two of the spots that we just took, did two more borings last week, and they're out to, to be tested, so we should have that information back tomorrow or Monday. With that, he was, what they're supposed to do is take two feet off the entire back parking lot, and replace that, so all that has to come off the property, it's a, a dig and remove. You can't leave, we can't leave it on site, obviously, because it's close to the river and everything else, so we have a whole process that we have to do for that.
So you're still storing equipment down there? Still have excavator down there?
There's still an excavator there, yep.
It's not his excavator though?
It's his, yep.
Oh, that's his?
Oh, that's his, oh, yeah.
He told us it was someone else's.
No, it's his, it's his.
Okay, because when I was there on a site visit, it was leaking hydraulic, and it's back, was back all the way up to the, to the, to the river.
Oh, really? Well, last week, there was a mechanic out there, went through the whole thing. Just because I, I was there and I saw him go through the whole process, so. But yeah, that's, that, if there was an issue with it, it's been resolved. So as, as, as far as the pervious payment-
Last time they were here, they shrugged it off.
Who did, he did?
Both, the father and son. Again, from my point of view, they were very disrespectful to the board back then.
Okay.
And it's just, everything became a laughing matter. I told them they had gas there, at the back door, the site was unprotected. No, we didn't have gas there, or maybe it was a two gallon can of gas, I mean, I don't give a shit, a two gallon, a five gallon, it's an unsecured site.
Right.
And it's, it's, it's a-
So one of mine, because I guess that's, that was an issue when I started, so one of the main points was to get, again, a lot of delays here, so all the doors are going in as we speak, so I get the front door put in, I have the rear door and the left front door going in tomorrow. The garage door in the back is going in, so we can secure the entire building itself, so.
This was two months ago when we told them this.
Again?
For two months.
I've only been doing it two weeks, I've only been working for them for like, four weeks.
We're not shooting arrows at you, I'm just explaining to you what's going on.
My point is to try and get us past this point we're at, and to get this done right, correct, and in the right process. So, again, bear with me, I'm just throwing out what I know, and again, I just found out this meeting was happening about three hours ago. So, so, anyway.
So you do need to introduce yourself to the building inspector.
Yep.
And the sooner you do it, the better. He's the governing body on, on whether he's going to shut this project down or not, because-
Is, are we in that, are we at that stage?
Well, you're very close to that stage.
Okay.
We were going to take a vote with the board tonight to suggest, we can't do it, but the building is, building commissioner can.
Yes, he can.
And because we haven't heard back from Mr. Baricelli?
So Mr. Pacelli says he's been trying to get ahold of B, B, of B, the BETA. It's a review going through the stuff with the soils and everything in the back, but he's gotten, he's gotten voicemails, he's left voicemails, he hasn't gotten a call back.
That's his subcontractor?
Yes, yep. But even beta calls, beta calls-
Beta was the theory review that the Concom identified.
So you're having problems getting ahold of him?
But he says he's, he's called, he's called the Conservation Commission too, and he hasn't gotten any call back.
But you have my number, and you've had my number for at least three weeks, or two weeks.
Two weeks, yep, yep.
And if he's having problems getting it?
Yes, you're the, you're the engineer, but you're also the taking over the Conservation Commission, right.
So if you're having issues with them, and you, you met me on site.
Yep, yep, and I did go through and, and take care of all those items that you pointed out, so.
Yep.
Redid all the fencing, and put new stakes in, and all that stuff, myself, so.
So, having done that, you, have you reached out, you know we need to do a reinspection?
Not yet.
Okay, are you ready for a reinspection?
Uh, pretty much, yeah, I don't see what, if that was the issue with most of that stuff.
There's more going on than just that.
I got rid of the trash, I got rid of everything else that was there, so.
Have you gone through the order conditions?
Again, haven't finished going, haven't gone through the entire order conditions yet, so.
Is there stuff like invasive species removal in there?
Yes, right, right, yep.
If there's any activity on that, that's a multi-year program.
Yes, right, in the, again, in the process, I had to set all that up, so I'm not wasting your time, so, okay? So.
And that's, that's separate from this board, and that would be all things. So in the end, Conservation Commission, just like this board, has its own authority, all that would have to go before them.
Yes.
And the agents, just like we report to the board, and we try, we try and gather information and bring things to the board, Conservation agent would be gathering information to bring to the board. And in the end, all decisions would be going through the Conservation Commission.
Right.
Just like the planning stuff.
Just like this whole board here, right.
And unfortunately, we're getting, things are getting confused, because there's multiple heads sitting in the floor.
Right, and you're filling in and so forth, so yes, like, until you said that, I didn't realize you're the same person. So, yes, I guess, I understand. Uh, let's see, so, again, in process, so if you could bear with me a little bit, and let me just really kind of get everything up to speed, and I'll get back to everybody, I'll, again, introduce myself to the building inspector, go through the process, find out exactly what he really needs, but the main thing was the transformer and the wall, is what I-
Well, there's more changes that have been done. I don't know if he's eliminated parking spaces to put the equipment out back, that used to be on the second floor. You didn't answer that question at the last meeting?
Illum, say that again?
There was equipment that was used by the cable TV company that was on his second floor.
Yes, yeah.
They were going to take and move it outside, and put it into, into a couple of the parking spaces, but he doesn't have enough parking spaces to begin with, I don't know-
They didn't put it into the parking spaces, they took a section above the garage in the back.
Yeah.
And refitted a room up there for their, for their, to, to, to do the same thing.
So, when he asked me about that, that type of work doesn't fall underneath the planning board's domain.
Okay.
It's supposed to go back before the board of selectmen, anything that does with that tower, I don't think he's ever done that either.
Yeah, the tower's staying, as far as I understand, they're still using the whole thing.
Right, but if there's any change.
Right.
And I know that he didn't do it, but the, the people that-
Verizon did, or, yeah, right.
My understanding, they've not been back before the selectmen.
So we're trying to give you a favor of-
Yeah.
You seem like you're looking for some guidance, and, and this board is trying to direct you to other things where we think you have problems, and we don't, we clearly don't know anything, but just like the board was saying, you need to talk to Conservation Commission, you need to talk to, there's several boards that you probably need to go talk to.
Right.
So, there was talk about the pavement changing it to, from pervious to non-pervious?
Pervious to, no, not to non-pervious, but, well, again, I can't do it now, because, you know, all the paving plans are closed, but it's been asked that we could, if we could go to, like, a gravel, and I don't know why, you know, instead of-
You would need to go to, that would definitely fall under conservation.
Conservation also, right? Yep.
Any changes have to go back, any, anything that was approved, if they make any changes, it has to go back to the board that made that,
Right.
That condition, so. And they, Conservation, I mean, they had a lot of conditions, they went back and forth to Conservation and made it for years. I can't, I don't even know how it was ever approved, to be honest with you.
So, I mean-
And I do, I get some little history on the building, and it had burned down once, and it was a wool factory, and they buried stuff all bow, so it's a, I mean, all sorts of horror shows with that whole property, so. Again, just coming up to speed with the whole thing.
But just, just in fairness to all the boards that are involved here.
Yep.
They gave them permission to go ahead and do this.
Right.
And they haven't been, they haven't been respectful to the boards, any of the boards, to do what they're supposed to do.
Okay.
So now it's, now, if you've been in the business any time.
Yep.
Now it doesn't become easy for you.
Yep.
So, which is saying, the more people you talk to, the more you find out. It'll help your process.
And that's, before I got to this point here, it seemed to be off the rails quite a bit.
How long will it take you to come back to the board with, with the set of red line drawings and the changes?
Um, they could be giving me until the middle of next week, so I can get ahold of everybody, I need to do that, and I'll get that out too.
On that point, so, you can get the, the next meeting dates on the town website.
Yep.
You need to submit plans the Friday, so for this Thursday-